Hello, everyone. Thank you very much for being here today. The first thing that we're going to do is to have a public hearing. And Ms. Christie, Assistant Town Manager Christie, will you lead us and tell us what all we're doing and what we need to do? Please, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Several months ago, I stood before you guys and you reviewed the pre-application for the grant for Block 2. The town was invited to do a final application. So this is the final application that is in your agenda packet. And it's due by Monday, August 28th. The only page that is not in here is the Attorney Certification of Site Control. Heather has that and it will go in with the packet when it goes in. Our attorney has completed that. The site map document, that part of the packet, was approved already by the Commissioner. So that's a site plan that was already approved in the past. And basically, even though we did not have to have a public hearing, it says you can have a public hearing or a public meeting. We decided to go with the stringent requirement. If you guys decide to accept this grant, during the pre-application process, the board asked us to find out if the deed restrictions would have to apply to the entire property or only the parts of the property where grant funding would pertain, meaning the bathroom, the parking lot that's connected to the bathroom, and any of the landscaping on that side that's in part of the con or the grant application. And they did say that we could do that. So basically, if you look on GIS, it looks like that would involve parcels 2 through 2, MF 004, 003, and 002. But we would not have to define that in this application. That would come along when we file the deed restrictions, these restrictions, if you guys get the grant.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, it's time for public hearings.
Yes, sir.
Anyone in the room wish to speak to the subject matter? If you do, please raise your hand and I will recognize you. And please come to the podium to my right and give us your name and address. And tell us what you want to tell us about this subject matter. Anyone wish to speak? Going once, twice, three times. The clear public hearing to be over. And the next thing we're going to do is to begin our...
Sorry, that's going to be other public comments. I'm forgetting it.
You're tricking me.
Sorry.
We're going to begin our regular public meeting for the month. And the first item on the agenda, for those of you that may not be familiar, if you will go to the, my left corner of rear in the room, there will be some paperwork that you can follow, including the agenda for the meeting. So let's begin, please, with the first item on the agenda, the invocation. And before we do anything on that, I would ask you to keep in mind how fortunate we have been in this community because those of you that are familiar with the national news, we have four divers that were lost offshore for 17 hours and they drifted 28 miles and were found. Two of those people live on, in Heritage Harbor on Lyons Farm. And another one...
Starfish.
Starfish, I'm sorry. And another one lived across the street from those two. And that's three. And the fourth one...
Was a visitor.
A visitor. So keep that in your prayers of appreciation to the good Lord above. And remember, those are less fortunate. Let's pause for just a moment of reflection, please. Well, thank you very much for that. And let's officially call the meeting to order. And thank you for being here and welcome all of you. And say to you that Brian Murdock will not be with us tonight. He's under the weather. And so we'll proceed as best we can and keep him in your prayers as well. And the next thing let's do, let's pledge allegiance to the flag to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Number four on the agenda is a consideration of approving the agenda. And before I ask for that, I would ask the Commissioners to consider number 11 becoming 8A and remove number 12 unless there's someone that's going to speak for number 12 in behalf of Mr. Murdock.
Does that change our move to accept it?
Motion made in a second. All right. Any more discussion? Otherwise, approval of the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimously approved as amended. Number five on the agenda, consideration of the minutes for July 18. A special meeting and a public hearing. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for our regular meeting and the public hearing on July 18th.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion in the hearing now? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimously approved. If you, you in the audience cannot hear, would you raise your hand? Okay, let's speak up. All right, next item on the agenda is public comments. Do we have anybody to sign up, Madam Clerk?
Yes, all right, that's what I mean. It's just late.
This is, this is the correct list, okay.
Yes, and there were a couple submitted online that I added to our website for people to review.
Okay. Mr. Robinson. This podium, speak into the microphone, please. Your name and address.
My name is Clayton Robinson, 2898 Holden Beach Road in Supply. I'm here on behalf of myself and the other Cabana companies that operate on Holden Beach. We're looking to, you know, possibly see about changing the rule of the 7:00 AM policy to daylight hours. Our main reason for that is two things, is we're trying to, number one, accomplish being able to get our guys out on the beach where it's not in the hottest hours of the day. Obviously, everybody knows how hot it's been the past three weeks, especially the past three days, and you know, the benefit of that. One of the biggest concerns is, you know, April and September 7:00 AM is not the same as July and August 7:00. Daylight changes at different times. Heat begins quicker, sun gets up earlier. I know we're going to get pushed back from two main entities. Number one being the trash collection on the beach. However, if you look at maps of the beach and see where most of us Cabana companies set up, which is 20 feet back of the high tide line for, you know, suggestion in previous years, that allows a clear path for anybody and it's not going to, you know, affect them doing their job in any way, shape, or form. We know that the other entity is the turtle patrol and, you know, having people out on the beach early that morning and, you know, possibly interfering with what they're doing. However, this morning, while our guys were out there about 6:30 checking the wind, obviously, we did not set up and it's gusting like it is, our guys happened to find some turtles that were going over the doom toward Ocean Boulevard West, toward some houses with floodlights on. This made us realize that, you know, between four Cabana companies and 12 to 16 employees on the beach every day, that we can help them. You know, the turtle patrol, they do a great job. They're out there, they scan the beach, find the deaths, find the turtles. One of the other things is, you know, having more help. We have people stretching from all the way from Dunescape to 1365 Ocean Boulevard West every day. And if our guys are out there at the same time they are, before, during, and after, and we can all work together collectively, see what's going on, it's going to achieve two things. It's going to help the turtle patrol and it's also going to help our guys not get a heat stroke by being out there, you know, until 9:00 AM whenever at this time of the year it's 110 degrees with humidity. So just wanted to consider those two factors, you know, why we're trying to do it. The main reason is, is we just feel like, you know, daylight at 7:00 AM in April and September is not the same as 7:00 AM during July and August.
All right. Thank you, sir. And that was in consideration of item number 12 on the agenda, I believe. All right, Ms. Thomas?
Speaking to item 11, which I think you said is 8A now, about the loan. I just wanted to hope that someone will explain how option number two that was approved for $2 million loan after giving up a $2.7 million grant changed to a $5 million loan application. And I hope that the Commissioners, please don't let yourselves be rushed into making decisions tonight without due diligence like what happened last month when you were told you had to make a decision about giving up the grant or your options were gone.
All right, thank you. Mr. Myers?
Tom Myers, 301 Ocean Boulevard West. I've had comments on item number 10. I guess it might also be 11, it might be eight, I'm not sure. Six weeks ago, we started a new fiscal year. The water and sewer fund was budgeted and the budget was approved at $8 million. That included a $2.7 million in revenue from EPA grant, $3.8 million in expenses for the sewer station, $1 million homes, and a $48,000 fund balance appropriations to save. Last month, we voted to forego the $2.7 million grant to pay for the station with our own money by using $1.4 million of cash and borrowing $2 million. And then on tonight's agenda, it looks like we now want to finance $5 million to pay for the station, which would be an increase of $1.2 million over the expense amount that was in the budget and $1.6 million over the number that was voted on at the last meeting. The $2.7 million in loss revenue, the $1.2 million of additional expenses adds up to almost $4 million of unfavorable budget variance. This is half of the $8 million budget that was just voted in weeks ago. And to put it in perspective, $4 million is more than we bring in the property taxes. It's more than we paid for the pier. It's more than we paid for Block 2. And it will almost triple our spending deficit, which was at $2.3 million. So I still don't know why we feel we have to do this. We have to do it now. We've got to rush. Instead of waiting maybe a couple of years until we've paid off some of our existing debt and we can use the grant. The work on the station has already been bid once, been pushed back, I think, twice. I don't know why it's urgent now. And the deadlines that were passed out at the last meeting, it looks like we're already missing those, so we'll probably go back to another year. So why are we foregoing the grant? I have heard the arguments about losing the station due to a hurricane, not having it come back, not having anything to come back to. I live here full-time. I don't have a second home I can escape to in evacuation. So I understand this concern and I don't want to be forced off the island for an extended period of time. However, the magnitude of the damage that's been discussed sounds like a 50-year, maybe 100-year storm. So by definition, a 50-year storm has a 2% probability of happening each year and a 98% probability of not happening. It just seems like we're betting on the 2% instead of betting on the 98%, which is a more reasonable bet. Even though it feels uncomfortable, we can't eliminate all of the risk, no matter how much money we're throwing at this, but there are inexpensive ways to help mitigate the risk. I grew up in a town on the Mississippi River. And there were many years when the residents had to build a wall of sandbags to keep the river from flooding the downtown. The sandbags worked. They held back the flow of the river for weeks until the floodwaters receded. So, you know, I think if we do lose this bet and there's a 50-year storm coming, I guess I don't know why a wall of sandbags can't hold off the storm surge and prevent the station from being flooded, at least up to the level where the electric equipment is. Also, if it is a 50-year storm, we could most likely qualify for help from FEMA. So I guess the same message before, please, don't rush into this. Do your due diligence, evaluate the financial implications, make sure you understand our overall current debt situation.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Shaver?
There you go.
Hey. Doing good, Brent.
I'm Brent Shaver, living at 121 Tarpon. And I'm up here speaking about number 11, representing the finding sources of funding for the station too. Parks and Recreation Committee has rubber stamps, the land use improvements, changes at Seafish Park. And it's not millions of dollars, but it's $250,000, $300,000 that when you get into it in the next, probably the next meeting, you're going to find the majority of the residents and the property owners and our acres, for sure, do not want these changes that have been rubber stamped and put in. So a dollar's a dollar, $250,000 or $1 million. If you're planning on spending money for something like Seafish, which Seafish is working, it's not broken right now. I think it makes a lot more sense to spend that money towards something that you're talking about here. You've got a lot of serious fish to fry up here. And I would say look around at those kind of things, force funding. And it might add up to something, an important object.
Thank you, Brent.
Thanks, sir. Did I miss anyone that thought they had signed up? Okay. Thank you all for your comments. Please support Chief Dixon. Good.
So July was a busier month. We definitely ended a full-blown summer. We had 757 calls for services last month. The biggest issue that we saw was an increase in our criminal incident reports that we took, which are your VEDs, LARCS knees, all those. We took a total of 23.
Wow.
Which was a lot for us. So that's what July should hope to be. Officers did an amazing job tracking down leads and working the cases they could. We closed out seven of our cases of those 23, but we still have 16 open that really need an investigator. And you notice that in the thing, it says 16 investigator requested and just resources available. We're doing what we can and trying to work those cases. That's really our biggest internal concern right now. We also saw an increase in parking complaints and violations. And we issued a combination of 63 citations and warnings for parking issues, 13 of those being on low-speed vehicles. And then one thing I wanted to mention on that was, if you're going to notice, something that came to our attention in July is, excuse me, on page 21, you notice the very last citation that's for beach strand, prohibited vehicle on the strand. Excuse me. We had, we had one vehicle that drove out onto the strand. Now, this isn't an everyday occurrence. It happens a couple of times a year. We write the ticket, we run them off. It happens. But it came to our attention that this is a $50 fine, which is the same thing as a parking fine. So just food for thought, if you're going to park on a boulevard and drop your stuff off and get a $50 ticket, or drive out onto the beach and drop your stuff off and get a $50 ticket. Made me something to consider for the town to increase that fine. I just mentioned Ocean Isle and Sunset are both a $100 fine for that same charge. I haven't added anything to it. None of this had really come to my attention until the packet had already been submitted. But when we figured it out, it's like, hey, I'm just going to bring this up. So if some of y'all want to discuss later, then you can. That's okay, too. And then what I've got on that, and then the last thing back there, when you get into the state citations, you know, we continued our efforts towards traffic. We issued 28 state citations with eight of those being issued with low-speed vehicles. And that's been our month of July. Been wide open. I know everybody has. And that's, that's what I've got for you. If you've got questions, comments, or concerns, I'd be glad to try and answer them for you or if I don't know how to answer, get it back to you.
Jeremy, I have noticed in the past, this past month, that the, your officers have been more diligent, especially, I mean, the seatbelt deals one thing, but when there's children involved, they seem to be pretty adamant about, you know, seeing the kids not belted in or standing up and that kind of stuff. And they have cautioned quite a few. And then if the people seem to want to cooperate, that's what they get, is a warning. But if they become belligerent, they end up with a ticket. So your guys are doing a good job of weighing out the, what they need to do and how they need to respond to this, this issue. But thank you.
I appreciate it. We're just trying to keep everybody safe. So, thank you.
Anything else, Doc?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. The good job you all do. Okay, 8A. I want to tape it just a minute of time here. And Mr. Shaver?
We skipped eight.
Oh, we skipped eight?
Sorry.
What's your name?
CM.
CM. Sorry, Mr. Evans.
I got to watch you like a hawk.
Would you please share your knowledge with us and give us a good report?
Good afternoon. Yes, I'll just read through the report real fast. A whole lot's changed. Other than if you watch the trends, it's actually doing what I said earlier in the year. And of course, August will always be slow, so next year, next month's report should be a little bit lower. But I'll give you some indication of what's coming and what we know about. Right now, the active new home permits that we have that are open are actually 29. Other active permits that are in development that we work on on a native basis are 249. So that's what we have open. Permits that are issued for over $30,000 is 26. And as you see, that number is going up. Substantial improvements are over $100,000. That number has stayed stable. And usually, when we're over that substantial improvement, unless it's a forced action on our part, it's a lot, it just says over $100,000, but those are normally even more. Permits issued, waiting to pick up, that's 21. That means that over there on the, on the counter, there's 21 that have been sitting there and somebody needs to come get them. And they rotate constantly. They're ready to be picked up. And, and they'll get them, they'll ask for them real in a hurry, and then they'll get them as they need them. So it's like backdoor there. Total permits for the whole cycle right through that is 299. All right, permits that were submitted incomplete last month, there was active tween, so that were in a condition where we couldn't work on them until we give them back to them. Permits in review is two that's, that's sitting there now. Zoning permits issued, we only issued three zoning permits. And for camera permits, we only issued three. The reason being is, is that permits that we are issuing are outside of those areas of the bottom concern. And that's typically what happens is that they get exemptions and that kind of stuff because we've got a lot of repairs and remodels going on. Permanent service for inspections, there was 97 of them that we touched this month. And the total inspections on those 97 were 381. It's very busy over there. It's about to get busy. We've got six brand-new homes that are sitting on the table over there right now that have actually gotten through the process and are getting ready to start getting signatures on, which they'll show up on next month's. We've got a table full of remodels and repairs. We're coming to the end of summer. People's rentals are slowing down. And so what they're doing is they're now preparing for those repairs that they put off or waited to get done. And, and we're going to start seeing some rotation. We also know that there's been numerous lots that have been sold and that we know that their permit's going to be issued. We, I used to do this in the past. I haven't done it in years, but this year we're pulling. We've got contractors who have had quite a few houses, which was a surprise to me. They've got them under contract and they will be built, which is kind of a surprise at this time. But I will remind Holden Beach that the, that when, when the world fell apart between 2008 and 2011 last time, Holden Beach held steady. Permit, applications at the permits never fell off at a percentage that the rest of the county or anywhere else did. And neither did any of the other beach communities. They either were remodeling, rebuilding, or building. And I, I'm seeing a trend and I think that we're going to hold it steady through. I think we're going to continue because we've, we've got such a, our area is such that it's very, it invites the kind of development that we see and it's constant. So that's, that's my report.
All right. Commissioners, do you have any questions? And Mr. Evans?
Thank you.
Mr. Evans, I appreciate that report.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to make this brief. Mr. Shaver and others have made comments about the concern of monies that are being bought, borrowed or sought to do various projects. And I just want to reassure the public that I think it's fair to say that all the Commissioners that have discussed the concern with me, everyone seems to be very much aware of the concern that you, the public, have. And it's weighing heavily on my heart and their heart and those of us that have been here a few years realize, and you look in the past, there seems to be like an ebb and flow of needs of funding for various projects. And it seems like it comes like grapes. It comes in bunches. It might go two, or three, or four, or five years and there's not a whole lot of needed funds. And then all of a sudden, everything seems to come to a head at one time. And I think that's one of the things that's happening to us now. I would say to you, the public, that most everything that I know of has been disclosed that's being done, but there are some things that are ongoing, things that what the Commissioners and the staff continually are seeking, funding, making phone calls, making contacts with the powers that be in Washington and Raleigh. And, and you can't say that something's coming until you know with certainty that, that something's coming from a government source somewhere or some private source. But I will tell you that the state of North Carolina's budget has not been passed yet, as we all know or should know, and that, that we have done a lot of communication with our state representatives in the Senate and the House. And we are in constant contact with our friends and representatives in, in Washington. The people that are elected to represent us in those locations can't promise anything until the budgets are passed. We do have some things that we are very hopeful of. And some of the things that are showing up as potential loans or grants or this or that, all that money is not going to be borrowed or given to us, and we know that. But to make sure that the town of Holden Beach has more than one source and one hope for, for the funding, we have to have multiple avenues to be able to go down in case things get worse. If you've got a credit card in your pocket and you've got a $25,000 limit on it, it doesn't mean you run out and borrow $25,000 on that credit card just because you have the ability to do that. But it's a nice thing to know that you could do it if you have to. The car blows up, furnace at the house blows up, or the roof blows off and you have to have money in a hurry, it's nice to know that you've got a source to go get it. So I think that's the attitude that we, that represent you are trying to do, to make sure we have a source to cover our needs if we have to. Please don't think that just because we have the ability to go get money somewhere that we're going to do it. I think somewhere in the near six weeks, from what I'm being told, the state budget will be passed. And Congressman McIntyre and his staff that represent us with our Washington contacts has some things going on as well that we're hopeful of providing some funds for us. So I'm just asking you to understand that just because these funds from different sources may be available, we're not out there seeking and planning to use all that money that may be available to us. And, um, I think sometime in the next six to eight weeks at the, at the latest, we will have some good news on one or more of these sources of funds, but we can't guarantee which one we're gonna pursue and get, if that makes sense, I hope. It makes a little bit of sense, and it puts a little bit of, uh, ease to your minds that we're not gonna go out there and hoard up a bunch of money that we don't need, and, and that doesn't make sense. Um, I don't think there's a Commissioner or a staff member that has anything in mind like that. The conservative attitude, uh, prevails, and I think we'll end up making you feel very proud and, and, and that we'll be okay. But we have to look at all the sources to make sure that we don't get caught short of funds as we may need. And, um, just ask your indulgence and appreciate your comments, and, um, uh, I think it'll work out. The town of Holden Beach is in good financial sound condition. Uh, our audits have proven to be, uh, able to prove that, and just bear with us, and, and hey, if we, if we haven't come up with some good solutions, hey, you can get rid of us as the elections come forth. So, uh, just, just kinda hang in there and bear with us and give us a chance to prove some results. Uh, November will be here soon enough, and you can spank us, vote us out, or whatever you want to do, but I think that you're gonna find that things aren't as bad as maybe some think it is. So I just ask your, your indulgence, and I appreciate that very much. And with that, let's go to number nine, Ms. Ferguson.
So during the public hearing, I covered most of the stuff on the grant. The only thing that, um, I will add is that, like, most of the grants that we received is a reimbursement grant, so we would pay for it upfront and get reimbursed through the state. Um, everything else that's on the page about ma, the Monday, August twenty-eighth, being the final deadline to submit is, is correct, and the grant application along with the application guidance was attached to the agenda packet for, um, everybody's consumption and digestion. It is twenty-five years for deed restrictions on parcels, as I mentioned. So if you guys decide you want to move forward, your motion should be to have the staff submit application packet prior to the application deadline listed above, which is Monday, August twenty-eighth.
Now, Christie, you said that, that the town has communicated with the DMC to clarify that we'd only want deed restrictions for any of the following grant for just the parcels that are involved in the restroom area. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Tuesday, March twenty-first, um, if you look at the outline, look, you can look at, there are several parcels. The question is, can you put twenty-five-year deed restrictions at the grant requirements on the parcels to be directly impacted by the parcel project we're asking for funding for? For a clamping bathroom facility and associated parking, only being a couple of parcels near where it says Gordon Boulevard. The picture was attached that's in your packet that shows the parcels. Good morning. Yes, you can limit the deed restrictions only to the parcels that have improvements for funding. You're not required to apply deed restrictions to other adjacent parcels, but did not have any grant funds applied to those areas. My Christian Berry Regional Consulting brought to the branch.
Thank you, Christie. Then I need to make a motion to instruct the staff to submit the application for the Public Beach and Waterfront Access Grant before the August twenty-eighth deadline.
Looking for a second?
Yes.
Judge, second discussion. Doctor, anybody want to discuss? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. This unanimous, Madam Court. Okay. Ms. Ferguson, are you still up?
I'm still up.
Now, keep going, you're doing good.
Okay, so, count to the four, all right. The attached resolution and attachment one was prepared by our bond attorney. If you excuse me one minute, I'll get my phone, because the bond attorney and the financial advisor are on standby and pays the board to block the call. Which is why you have your gizmo here in front, but I would have to call them upon you saying to do that, they're not on the line yet. Um, this is necessary in our process of documents that have to go to the LGC to obtain financing for Silver Station Two. Also attached is the required public hearing notice that sets the date for the public hearing. That has been updated in the documents that have been handed to you tonight to September nineteenth because there was not a quorum available to the board for September twelfth. So there is no special meeting that would be September nineteenth at the regular meeting that you would be taking the actions that's hearsay September the twelfth. Um, and also attachment three, the Joint Legislative Committee notice that has to go out today. So these are orders of documents that always have to go forward. We had to do this with the last live station, and again, we have to do this with this live station. Um, if you turn to page fifty-nine, one of the comments that came up tonight is the not to exceed amount that is there under section one, and it's also in the Exhibit A document. That five million dollar figure is the ceiling, as in if the worst-case scenario happens that we're telling the LGC, we may want to borrow that amount of money. Well, what do we mean by worst-case scenario? We are hearing from our engineer that, um, he thinks that it is not gonna be out of the ballpark for this project to have bids to come in at four and a half million dollars or more, and that also it's gonna be a constrained bid climate, as in we may not get enough bids. There are lots of projects going on in other parts of the state, and they're seeing this when they have bid openings, which means that those that do bid may make their bids higher. So basically, like you talked about that credit card earlier, and I was gonna use that analogy, this is a limit to say, hey, we can't go back a second time with order of documents that these have to go to the LGC. We don't have a redo to go back to the second document that said, well, we put this amount, but now we need more. We don't intend for it to be a five million dollar figure, but we don't know until the bids come in. Also, to, um, go back to the grant situation, when we left, the board was under the impression that we were gonna cut off the grant, but we talked to EPA, and basically the ball was in their court. We had done everything we could do to the point that they basically, they did tell us that we were ahead of all other communities. And we said, well, while we're running this calendar, we're gonna let them play catch-up, because just maybe the trains will align. So we did not tell them that we didn't want them on. And we're still running both trains simultaneously and hoping that they can come in in our deadline. But that five million dollars gives you the flexibility and is the prudent choice when we sat down and talked with our financial advisors that, one, if you don't get a grant, and, two, it doesn't take into account any of the cash on hand that you have that you want to apply, because just suppose, when you look at the Atlantic this morning, there's two hurricanes out there, what if we're hit with a hurricane in the next three weeks, and y'all have substantial damages to one and four that you need to deal with with the cash on hand? This is just saying this is a max number that we may want to come to you with, because it doesn't say not to exceed, we need a little bit more. We can't go back and do that. We get one turn at these documents. So it's, it's kinda like when I took my son shopping down at Murray Beach for school this past weekend, and he's fifteen, he grew about three inches this summer. I knew I wasn't gonna hit my limit on my credit card, but that plastic was flying fast, till we found out that he had enough wardrobe. So that's what that five million dollars is. It's if the grant doesn't come through, they don't reach where we need them to be, the bid climate is horrible and it comes in high, and you guys can't use cash on hand for some reason, just because we can't go back and redo these documents at a later point in time. Do we think that you'll have to use that much? No, but we don't know till you open bids and afford bids. So in order for you guys to take any actions, you would have to have approval of Resolution twenty-three-eleven, as well as Exhibit A to set the public hearing and direct the town manager to notify the Joint Legislative Committee of the town's intentions through Exhibit A, attachment three, which goes out today.
Christie, what point will the, the grant become unobtain, unattainable? I mean, what, what, would we, could we still investigate this possibility of financing and it not affect the grant coming in? Can we not go to bid?
That's what we're doing now. So basically, as our financial advisors are talking through the banks, they're really having to have conversations of, hey, we may be coming to you for this rate, or we may be coming to you for this rate minus two-point-six million dollars because we got the grant. The LGC, we've had a long conversation with the LGC yesterday in a preliminary call, and they understand, and they really hope to see the grant come through, but this five million dollar number didn't scare them because they know that we have to have wiggle room that it may not come in in time. And so we are basically proceeding with our own risks, following our own construction and financial calendars, and if the EPA catches up, hopefully then we can recoup some of that money or all of that money, and if they don't, then... They're telling us, we're having conversations, it's really all-consuming for David and I right now. When we walk through the door and we're having conversations, we don't know, meetings we don't know we're gonna have that day. But we went from last Tuesday, EPA telling us that nothing had moved on their side in two weeks for a NECA review, to Friday afternoon at four o'clock, us getting an email to say the town has been, does not have to go through a whole NECA review. So that is a very good positive that would have slowed down the process. Typically, it's sixty days for review once we submit our application. Um, they may be able to speed up that process, we may be able to expedite that a little bit with our federal help, as in our advocacy partner.
Any more questions, comments, concerns?
Well, it seems like we're in the deadline business, whether we want to be or not, and in order to get that process started, we need to approve the application and other appropriate, uh, documents that we need to get it started. And I think it's been very well explained tonight with the analogy to the credit card, uh, limits, uh, what we are trying to do and looking at the, uh, success we've had in the past, which is no guarantee for the future, but I know that we'll make the best efforts we always do. So I just move, we get started with it and, uh, process it and go forward.
There's a second? That was a motion.
It was a motion. Didn't sound like it, but it was.
Okay.
Second.
All right, Doctor, second. More discussion?
I still am having trouble with the, uh, with not being able to receive over two and a half million dollars. I just, I just don't know why us investigating the possibility of financing and the government giving us money that was earmarked for us, as was told by our representatives, it was, it was coming our way. At what point do we lose any hope of having that funding available to us?
We're gonna keep going as long as we can, until the, until we have to stand, I would say until we have to stand before the LGC on the date of their October meeting, if we have enough bids on hand, and say how we're gonna proceed with the financing, we're gonna keep going. And we may keep pushing it after that to try to get reimbursed, it's just until they tell us that you have to stop because your construction schedule is ahead of us meeting this, we're gonna continue to push to try to get that money.
Well, is this grant not one that we'd have to do pay upfront, and they pay us back anyway?
It is, but you have to turn in a work plan with your construction schedule that they review, and you have to follow that work plan. And right now, we have accelerated our work plan because for them, we couldn't start until that calendar we passed out last month. We're trying as hard as we can to bring that two-point-six million dollars. We had an hour meeting with them this morning looking at the application, what, the work
Any more comments or questions? If not, I'm gonna call for the question. Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
No.
All right. Mr. Smith, the negative vote. The judge and the doctors, yes.
Mayor, just a reminder that that date is September nineteenth, at the regular meeting bound, it's totally here for me.
Does that replace the September twelfth?
Yes, twelfth goes away. It was before.
Those of you in the audience, make a note of that, the nineteenth instead of the twelfth for that public hearing. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ferguson.
Thank you, Christian.
Okay, number twelve we removed, is that correct?
Yeah.
All right, we're on number thirteen, public comments on general items. If you want to speak about anything you want to talk about, if you raise your hand, come to the podium, yes, ma'am. Give us your name and where you live.
Beverly Compton, one-three-one-seven O V W, and I want to talk about candidate's night. Um, H B P O A is still in the candidate night game, and we have a supporting member. Some of our directors are running for a position here in the town. They've asked that they not be involved in candidate's night, but we want to run it anyway, so we've reached out to the League of Women Voters, Kate, or Kate Fear, who have run different island, moderated different island, uh, events in the past, and you can go online and see them. Southport, I think, was the most recent. We're dealing with a woman whose name is Barbara Correll, who is a representative of that organization, and she has asked the candidates if they're available on the usual night that we can be planned for this kind of thing, which is October twentieth, just before, just as the voting is starting. She's not gotten the kind of response that she wants, and we're asking if you are a candidate that you would please, uh, answer her next note, which will be coming to you Since the other candidates have asked to be recused from any real connection to this year's candidate's night, unless we're, of course, writing to all candidates, we feel that we have a solution that helps our organization, and we think we have a professional organization that has done this so many times before. Their format is really not that much different. I mean, almost all, everyone's format is the same, except that ours will not have questions from the audience this time. They don't do that, the League of Women Voters, they have all their questions prepared, and they invite you to add your own questions if you're a candidate. So tomorrow, she will be contacting the people that have not, I think she contacted today, actually, those people, but then she'll, I don't know, she'll be driving on train on Wednesday, I think, I don't know what she's doing, but, you know, she's gonna try and get up with them and see what their thoughts are. And so I'm here to assure you that the H B P O A will be around the edges, we're going to be, um, collecting information on our survey, which is an annual survey that we just throw in for that purpose as well. We are also need to have a solidified date because we have to keep the room. We have a couple reservations right now, and we need to save the candidates, the dates we have, there's not much wiggle room on that. And so to the public, I say, I guess, please save the proposed date, which is October the twentieth, and to the candidates, please respond to Barbara Correll if she's in touch with you.
Okay, did I understand you say that, that your board members are not participating?
We are not particip, our board members that are running as candidates are not participating in this, and, you know, since I said I knew somebody who knew somebody, I got to be the contact for this, and we have a whole team of three other people who are also directors on H B P O A. And we have a little team of three other people, who are also directors on HBPOA.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else wanting to speak about anything on your mind? Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say that I do not buy into your analogy of a credit card.
Ma'am, I need your name again.
Tracy Townes, 109 Friggin'. I just wanna say that I don't buy into your analogy of running up a credit card just in case. To me, that's what a savings account is for, for unexpected things, and I think that's how the town should be running their budget and making sure that we have enough savings so we don't have to run out and borrow $5 million more dollars that we may or may not need.
All right, anyone else want to say anything about anything? You're gonna forever hold your peace? Okay? All right, town managers report, Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, sir. Briefly, I have three items to tell you about. First of all, the canal dredging in Harbor Acres. We are setting up for a winter event, dredging of some selected areas in Harbor Acres. There's some high spots in there. Because it's a relatively small-scale project, it's probably going to be a bucket dredge operation instead of a traditional hydraulic pipeline dredge, and our engineer is developing those specs at the present time. On the Lockwood Falls inlet crossing and the bend widener dredging project, the Corps is going to be paying for about 80,000 cubic yards of removal. And 80,000 cubic yards of sand, there's another 60,000 cubic yards in the bend widener, which the town, through the long-term MOA, along with Brunswick County helping out a little bit, is going to fund that $535,000 project for the bend widener sand. All of the sand together is about 140,000 cubic yards. It'll be placed on the east end in the Amazing Grace, back toward the Winden River Clubhouse area. Just to give you an idea on what that breakout is, the $535,000 for the portion of the, that we're on the hook for, the state picks up 75% of that, and then the town and the county split the residuals 75-25. So for about $100,000, we're gonna be receiving 140,000 yards, cubic yards of sand on the east end. Those funds have already been transferred to the state and subsequently to the Corps, and are looking at a, that's gonna be a wintertime dredge project. Hopefully, that will dovetail nicely in with the private firms dredging through the Civil War Historic District earlier this June, and we can, we can make it really nice to get back and forth to the sea. Status on the Ocean Boulevard resurfacing, pretty sketchy with the details on that, but based on the latest meeting from DOT with their contractor, the survey work on that project is going to begin as soon as 9/11/23, with construction starting in November. I don't have any more particulars beyond that, but I do know that the GSAT's Transportation Advisory Committee meets Friday, and I'm sure that the project officer will be at that meeting, and we can get more details. That's all I have.
Anybody, commissioners, have any questions of Mr. Hewitt? All right, thank you, Mr. Hewitt. Mayor's comments? I'm on that GSAT committee, and we do have that meeting, and I don't have anything different than what you just reported about our resurfacing and our bike paths. Remind everybody that was already said tonight, there are a couple hurricanes out there, and we're in, in the end of the summer here, and be ready and be reassured that the town of Holden Beach, Mr. Clemmons, you and your staff got everything done as normal, I'm sure, in preparation, and the town will do its very best to do what's best for the town and protect all of your properties and you individuals. We are prepared as best we can. I don't know of any issues that we have that would cause us not to be. Warning about heat, and I don't think I need to tell anybody to be careful about the heat. And, Doctor, I'm sure you'll talk about the critters and the dogs and the cats and all that in a minute, and their safety. But also, don't forget about the school buses. As school starts, we're gonna have buses riding up and down the beach. Chief, I know you guys are much aware of that, and you and your staff. It's hard to believe that the summer has almost ended, but I'll be looking forward to that fall weather, as I'm sure you have. And with that, Mr. Smith, you have anything you want to say?
No, sir, not, not as much as usual, just a couple of things. But I do wanna thank our staff, Tim, David, and everybody for moving forward with this ADA work. It seems to be coming along nicely. I mean, I don't know how in the world anybody could expect it to get done quickly if you don't get started. And you can't get started on one thing at a time if we've got quite a bit to do under a time limit. So I think the work that they've done up at, in Quentin Street, out at Line 15, OBW, what they've done in Halsted Park, it seems to be a cohesive effort to, to get this taken care of, and it is appreciated. My only other comment is, as we started the meeting with this evening, we are, we are truly blessed, and with the miracle of being able to find four divers, you know, 60 miles offshore. It was a traumatic Sunday evening, to say the least, but thank goodness they were highly qualified divers and knew what to do. But if it wasn't for the actions of our United States Navy and our United States Coast Guard, they wouldn't be back on sailfish, starfish today. So we're really blessed to have such absolutely wonderful equipment that can be deployed that quickly. And for a change, we got some really good results. Oak Island Hospital checked them all in, and they were back home before the end of the next day. So it's, again, we're truly blessed with the support that we get from our United States forces. Thank you. That's it.
Doctor?
I want to thank everyone for attending the meeting. Appreciate the staff, all their work. We've had a lot going on. I know you've done a lot of work, a lot of phone calls, a lot of meetings, and appreciate helping us to try to move forward with some of these projects that we're trying to deal with. As Alan mentioned, the heat index has been pretty terrible for humans, so I'm gonna put in my plug for the animals. Just keep in mind, they need to be cool. Bring them inside, watch the asphalt and the sand. If you're not walking barefoot on it, you don't need to let them walk barefoot on it. Make sure everybody's got water. Stay hydrated yourself. It's really bad. I don't know how people are working out in it, and I feel bad for them, but stay hydrated, stay safe, and have a wonderful Labor Day.
Judge?
Well, to reiterate what's been said, and I agree, what a blessing. That was a miracle in a way to get, get all of them. It's a great thing. And as with the rest of the members, I so much appreciate the staff. We do have deadlines we have to meet. You go through your best thinking, you give us your best feelings, your hunches, but not only that, the experience you've had, the expertise, the best that you can get, the best information, and we make the best judgment calls that we can make. And I thank all of you for, for that effort. Never disagree with anybody, so long as we agree on the facts. After that, everybody, I respect their opinions. Thank you for coming, and as you said, look after the animals and us old people.
All right, anything else, Madam Clerk, that we've omitted or screwed up or anything?
Nope.
All right, is there, you know, this, what time is it? 6 o'clock?
That's your record.
5:50.
Hurry, get going.
I would like to make a motion for adjournment.
All right, all in favor, say aye.